I would now call it December 3rd, 2012, Blue Springs City Council Meeting Order. If you stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and then I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I'd like to welcome those of you in attendance, as well as those that might be watching on Cable TV 7, to tonight's Blue Springs City Council meeting. The next item is the consent agenda. Are there items that need to be pulled? If there are not any, I would accept the motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Kuzel.
Aye.
Councilman Levy.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carr.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next, we have a presentation. It's a certification of, certificate of appreciation from the Mid-America Regional Council by Sarah Lynn Hayes and Keith Fattis. Would you come forward, please, and make your presentation? And we're going to pause for a photo op.
Oh, we are doing.
Well, let's do the presentation, and then we'll go back. We want to make sure we have this in hand first before we take the picture.
All right. Well, thank you for letting us come. I'm Sarah Lynn Hayes with Mid-America Regional Council's Public Safety, Public Safety Department. My director, Keith Fattis, Director of Public Safety at Mark. Our staff, meaning the public safety database folks, got together and selected a handful of people that we worked with for a number of years that have helped us out greatly. Gail Porter is one of those. So each community has a single point of contact that we work with that helps us with addressing and mapping issues as it relates to 911. I did a little research, and my first correspondence was with Gail was early 2001. She was doing this job long before I started, but that's how long Gail and I have been working together. I contacted her with an addressing question. She was so quick to respond, and ever since then, she has been so helpful and always quick to respond with anything that we need. She understands how important it is to ensure 911 addresses are correct, our map data is correct. She has done so many reviews of all the streets in the city, and she continues to help us. Of course, technology has changed over the last 10, 15 years from landline 911, cellphones, internet-based phones, and now what we're referring to as next-generation 911, which is dealing with a variety of different features for 911. With that comes a standard of 98 percent accuracy. I'll tell you today that the city of Blue Springs, because of Gail, is at 99.7 percent accuracy. The only reason we're not at 100 percent, so we have a few lingering AT&amp;T issues out there that is nothing that Gail could, you know, have anything to do with. So tonight, Gail, I want to publicly thank you for everything that you've done for us, all the help that you've provided us throughout the years. We wouldn't be able to do it without you. We know that you're a huge asset to us, and wanted to just provide a certification of appreciation for everything that you've done, and we want your folks to know how important you are to us, along with, like I said, just a small handful of other people throughout the region. So.
Keith, why don't you get in this picture, too?
These people do all the work.
Well, that's all right. As a manager, you take a lot of credit, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Gail, we appreciate, well, I appreciate your comment and recognizing, Gail, and, Gail, I want you to know on behalf of the city, we appreciate what you do as well. You know, it was just music to my ears, not surprising when they say it, 99 percent, and AT&amp;T better get it together, because we're looking for 100. So anyway, congratulations, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we're privileged to have Senator Will Kraus here. He's going to come talk to us about the upcoming legislative session and how his office might be helpful to the city of Blue Springs and our objectives and priorities for the upcoming session in Jefferson City. So with that being said, welcome Senator Kraus, and we turn the microphone over to you.
Good evening. I'm going to be very brief. It's a pleasure to be here this evening with you. As you know, many of you know, last year I hosted town meetings in my district office. Many of you came. We discussed topics. I believe it's important that we have a good working relationship amongst ourselves, and I appreciate the input that you gave me last year. You did bring me one piece of legislation mid-session last year. We worked on trying to get that in several bills. Unfortunately, none of those bills got to the governor's desk or got through the whole process. This year, we're going to prefile the NID language. Believe we'll ask for consent on that bill. I think it will get through. I do think that this year's going to be a productive year in Jefferson City. We've got both the Speaker and the President pro tempore in the Senate that are working together and talking, so I think you're going to see a lot more legislation move that is going to be impactful for the city of Blue Springs and the surrounding areas, especially in economic development. We've been lagging behind other states. Hopefully, this year, we'll be able to get some legislation that will spur growth and move the state in the right direction and your city in the right direction. Please know that my office is always open, willing to talk to any of you personally, one-on-one, or if you need us to do some research or some, investigate state laws and find out what we can do to help the city of Blue Springs or your constituents, please give us a call. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Listen, I appreciate you. Appreciate your comment and extending that opportunity for us to do that. I know that the legislation last year came late in the session, and you made a gallant effort to try to get that done. Almost got it done. This year, prefiled, I think, is very critical, and certainly, we're here to assist you in whatever we can do to help you get that done. And I know that when you're not available, your chief of staff is available, whom most of us already know. So anyway, I appreciate your comment tonight, extending that opportunity to us, and certainly would open it up to the council if you have any questions or comments to make to Senator Kraus.
See you in. Thank you for your service. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor.
All right. Thank you so much. Next, we have a presentation about the United States Postal Service. We have Russ Rainey that's here, and he is the Real Estate Specialist, Western Facilities Service Office. Russ, and I know you have some other people here, some of whom we know that you might want to introduce to the rest of the council and those that's in the audience.
I do, thank you. My name is Russ Rainey. I'm from Denver, Colorado, and I'm something called a Real Estate Specialist/Project Manager. I'm here to talk to you about what our, what our plans are for the city of Blue Springs. And with me is Postmaster Tim Dwyer, whom most of you probably know, also Taren Reynolds. Taren is something we call an MPU, or a Manager of Post Office Operations, which means he manages something like 12, maybe 15, post offices. So whatever I can, I'm sure they will. Our purpose in being on your agenda this evening is to give the city and our customers a heads-up before we go any further into our process. The postal service is trying very hard to become more community and customer-friendly with respect to advising the community of what our plans and needs are. As you know, like many other businesses and organizations today, the United States Postal Service continues to be challenged financially by the continuing tough national economy and declining mail volume and revenues. Some of the facts of life that we're dealing with, as well as some of the measures we've taken to date, are that with email and the ability to make electronic payments, mailing habits have changed. As a result, we've seen a 25 percent reduction in mail volume over the last five years. We ended our fiscal year 12 with a $15.9 billion net loss. For those of you who are not aware, the postal service receives no tax dollars to operate with. We are 100 percent dependent on revenue from our services, i.e. the sale of postage. We're reducing our work hours, as well as our workforce. Administrative employees such as myself, as well as executive officer salaries, have been frozen for the last couple of years. We've halted construction of new postal facilities, except in very rare instances. We've reduced administrative and support staff at headquarters, as well as our regional and district offices. We're consolidating mail processing operations and selling unused and underutilized postal facilities nationwide. The good news in all of this is that we've continued to maintain our highest service levels ever, but we still need to accomplish additional major cost savings to improve efficiency and productivity to ensure a viable future. As part of this effort, the postal service has established a facility optimization program to identify buildings, facilities, and properties nationwide that we may be able to sell or consolidate so as to be able to use the space more efficiently. We're sharing our proposals with customers and stakeholders early in the process, and we solicit your input. To that end, our tentative plan currently is to move the retail operation located at the main post office to the South Avenue Annex, a little less than a mile away, and sell the main post office facility. Our community contact process is such that subsequent to this meeting, I will be sending you, Mr. Mayor, a letter regarding our plans going forward. And in that letter, I will advise you that the city or any member of the community can appeal our decision within the next subsequent 30 days after you receive that letter. If the decision is to move forward, we will advise you, Mr. Mayor, of each step along the way and allow ample time for responses. So that's my, my words, and if you have any questions, we'll try to answer them.
Okay. I'm going to open it up to council, but if there are interests in appealing, who is that, who does that appeal go to?
It'll go to the Vice President of Facilities and Headquarters. After, you'll direct it to me, and I'll forward it to the Vice President of Facilities and Headquarters.
Now, where is that, where is that located?
Washington, DC.
In Washington, DC.
Yes.
Okay. The other thing is, we call the one downtown, the main post office. The one down south, we call it the Annex. So what are your plans for names? Will that become the main post office, and we'll get rid of the Annex?
I'll let Tim speak to that.
Well, the official title of the, of the facility is Annex, because it was annexed from the main office 12, 13 years ago. To make the official title change, whether it's a station branch or main office, that's something that administratively, it can go through the process, and it's just, it becomes a title. Obviously, it'd be the only postal facility in Blue Springs, so it would be obviously considered the new main post office.
Just don't want to be an Annex when I can.
No, we could drop the Annex, because really, an Annex would indicate it's attached to another unit.
Okay. Questions of the council? Councilman Fowler?
Yeah, on the, what's known as the Annex today, that, I guess, for retail, that's a very small room, and compared to how many people are normally at the daily, you know, over at the Main Street post office, there must be some different plans for the retail portion of that?
The Annex is actually 22,000 square feet, and the blueprint, or the snapshot of what the current carrier complement, 43 carrier routes plus retail operations and a brand-new box section, we call for just over 18,000 square feet. We have about 22. We could use the existing footprint. We would not have to extend the building in any direction. The building was actually built initially to handle automation equipment years ago, similar to the facility in Greensummit and Lee's Summit and several others. But there's actually a square footage that would allow adding retail and box without changing the footprint. We would aesthetically, obviously, do some, something to the front, or if they add windows and make it more appealing, parking in the front where the grass currently is, things like that.
So, so just to shorten that up, the retail portion that I see today would be expanded over at the Annex.
Right. The Annex currently has no retail portion. The Annex is strictly to pick up packages or certifieds or something, so it's, it's what we call a Dutch door and just entrance lobby. That would be, it would be comparable, or obviously not, this is a '70s model, it would be brand-new, but it would be comparable to the square footage that, what we have in the main office currently. It would extend into the carrier operation behind that door.
Okay.
Question for you, as you all go forward with this, I know the primary focus is cost containment, from what you're saying, but have you also looked at the broader impact on the community itself? The things that come to mind to me are how vital that facility downtown is to traffic counts, to help keep the, you know, the city's been working for a number of years on downtown revitalization, and I know the very first thing that I started hearing from citizens on this, when they became aware that it was coming, was what is this going to do to our downtown?
Well, and to answer that, there's a couple of things we looked at. We looked at cost, we looked at efficiencies, and we looked at service. Cost is, a 10-year savings is between 100, or 1.6 and $2 million is savings. Obviously, like Russ said, with the, with what we're losing every day, we're doing everything we can to try to keep the same service in the same community at a lesser cost. The efficiencies would be actually improved. What happens at this facility is roughly 12,000 square foot at the main office is, mostly the day we had, we have two to three employees there. Whole lot of space heated and cooled behind them, but two to three employees in front. One of the frustrations is literally a line out the door. I go by there, and there's a line out the door, there's no one there, and I got three idle employees. The advantage I have in everything under one roof is that I have, now I have allied time where I can, if there's a line out the door, I have clerks in the back doing non-essential functions. I could go to the front, open up a new window, and help that line. If there's no customers in the lobby, then I can take some of those clerks from the window and bring them to the back. And there's a disadvantage operationally and through efficiencies of having it in two different locations. So in some sense, it would improve. And I have talked to the mayor in the past about having a postal presence in the downtown area still, and there's, there's still options. There's what's called the Village Post Office. There's different options like that that we could, we could entertain, we could, we could have a smaller retail unit, we could, we could look at still having a postal presence, maybe not at that location, but maybe physically on Main Street, you know, to draw people to that location as well.
Thank you.
Councilman Edmondson, and then Councilman Bowerman.
Well, I guess my concern is, and, and, so you know, I have a business downtown, so I directly see a lot of the traffic we have downtown, the number of people that pull through, is that, one, it probably will affect us downtown as far as our draw, and that concerns a lot of people. I know we have a lot of people here in the audience that came tonight to hear your presentation, and I'm sure they're going to respond to that. But my questions would be, is how are you planning on dealing with the increase of traffic over that location? The road is not as good as what you have presently. You know, you're going to deal traffic, bus, trucks, foot traffic? I mean, you guys get a lot of walk-in foot traffic, from what I've seen, and there's no sidewalks over there. Road's not lending itself to walk down that road, plus have trucks come by, plus cars come by. So, so my concern is to the public for that. I, you know, to me, that needs to be addressed in some way or another. And I guess staff would have to answer whether, if they're making changes to parking lot and remodeling on the inside, does that hit a threshold where we have to bring it up to current code, or probably not? So we don't have any regulation on parking lot size, or?
Really, when they, if we look at expanding the exterior, as they're saying, if they're expand more than 25 percent of the footprint, then we would look at upgrading to the current standards. But everything else, up to that point, would have to meet standards in terms of what type of, you know, how the parking lot would lay out, things like that. But in terms of aesthetics, it wouldn't necessarily trigger that.
Unless the post office decides to go along with our codes, they're really exempt from them.
Ah, well, that's, okay. That answers my questions there, then, I guess. Well, I just know that the downtown is very concerned with the post office leaving, and we feel that that's going to be a deterrent to what we've tried to do over the last few years. We have a very strong group that's working real hard to try to revitalize it, and, to put it bluntly, I think it'd take it as a slap in the face that you guys are leaving.
Councilman Bowerman?
Yes, well, I'll say something positive to these gentlemen. I personally use the Hy-Vee contract branch, and I really appreciate that, and I know a lot of other people that do, too. So, got to give you some, some good news. Now, I have a question, though. How many other contract facilities like the Hy-Vee branch are there in the city? I just don't know. Or are there any?
Official contract units, we have Hy-Vee and we have Office Depot. There are other, other, other businesses, Price Shopper comes in and buys rolls and books hundreds at a time, so they can sell.
UPS Store does, Quick Trip does, sure.
There's, there's, there's numerous.
Okay.
I'm embarrassed to actually say that there are actual weeks. We, we track revenue that you come in and buy a book of stamps or a coil, as what's called walk-in revenue. I'm embarrassed to say that Hy-Vee has weeks that they actually outsell our main office.
The reason why I bring this up, because it's convenience. Like a lot of things nowadays, we're just, we're, we're convenience animals. And because I shop there, it's, it's convenient for me, and I do a lot of mail. So again, I wanted to thank you for that, and then I wanted to ask, how many others are in our city? So I don't know what the numbers are, but people go to the downtown main post office, but there's a lot of people like me that don't ever go down there, because we have other facilities. And the only time I went to the Annex was because of just that. It was registered mail or a parcel. Ooh, I see. That dated me. Parcel. Gee. So, thank you.
Councilman Fowler, and then Councilman Levy.
Okay. You know, I guess, you know, whatever direction this ultimately goes, I think, you know, there's a lot of concern about this, and maybe our EDC would, you know, get involved, you know, in either direction. I think that the EDC could probably help the situation out, you know, because if, if we want to increase their presence with economic development, if, if they end up making the decision to move on to the Annex, economic development would be good for that site, you know, as it needs to be backfilled. So.
Councilman Levy?
Yeah, I guess when, when I hear it talked about, when people make comments to me, the main question I always hear is, why can't we consolidate to the main branch? And so I'd just maybe like to hear the just, what's the main justification for moving to the Annex rather than the other way around?
Okay. About 12 years ago, and prior to that, I was not working here. I've only been here for just over a year, but the main post office actually had a double wide trailer coming off the back dock, and I don't know how many people can remember that. But all the real cares actually worked in a trailer off the dock, and no heat, no cold, actually. It was just a standalone trailer. So it was highly encouraged to get their mail sorted out on the street pretty quickly, so. But the footprint calls right now through all the OSHA regulations and everything for about 18,000 square feet, for the 70 employees, for the 43 routes, for the mail sorting equipment, everything, restrooms, everything else. The facility we have here is about 11.6, I believe. So we outgrew this facility. In the, in the '70s, that was, that was more than adequate for the 17 routes in Blue Springs, Missouri, as was the main office in Lee's Summit, who's added two offices since then, and, but that, to answer your question, it's strictly putting the number of employees and number of equipment and route mail and mail sorting equipment, calling for 8,000, 18,000 square feet and an 11,000 square foot building.
Anyone else?
Can I jump in here once? Thank you.
Councilman Carr?
I guess my question to piggyback on Councilman Edmondson, the street's not as good as it is downtown. There are no sidewalks. Are you going to end up coming to us for infrastructure money down the road?
Well, I can't answer that. As far as the, the parking and the sidewalks, too, in front of the facility, the, everything's going to be designed by facility specialist, you know, architects, the people that do that kind of work. I, I don't know. And I agree that the street is less than desirable. The traffic coming in and out, I have 53-foot tractor trailers, I have 43 carriers going in and out, and, and I also have customers coming in and out. So that needs to be done safely and efficiency, efficiency is possible, and I do agree with that. But I don't have the answer. Sorry.
That answer your question?
Not really, but he doesn't really have an answer to my question. I just think down the road, they're going to come to us, and they're going to want us to improve the road, put in sidewalks, and that'll be at our expense.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
I got one.
Yeah, you got it, is it?
I just got a couple of questions for Mr. Rainey. You indicated there was an appeal process. I think all of us here are certainly interested in understanding how that process would specifically work, but it sounds like there's been a lot of energy and analysis that's already brought you to this point in time, and, and I don't want to say that that, you guys have made that final decision, but certainly would appear that you're leaning in that direction, and that, that the stars are aligning for, for you to truly go to a different location. If an appeal is submitted to you, what, what then happens? You said we would send it to you, and then it goes to an individual, and then what happens from that point forward?
Well, it's, depending on what the content of the appeal is, it's taken into consideration, and, and we'll just have to play it by ear, if you will, as to what, what the appeal is about.
And, and that is done by an individual or a committee?
No, we always, we always do things by committee.
Okay. All right. And then my, my last question is, you'd indicated you were, if you did make the relocation, you're going to market the current facility and attempt to liquidate that asset?
Yes.
Well, just plant the seed. We'd certainly be willing to discuss with you a purchase of that for a dollar, and then we could.
Discuss what? I'm sorry?
We would discuss purchasing that facility for a dollar, so that we could then use it to reinvest into our downtown.
I don't blame you.
You know, I think it's just a spirit of cooperation, I mean, governmental entities, you know?
I'll buy it for two bucks.
I might, I might join the bidding myself.
Throw in street and sidewalks, right?
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, certainly, we appreciate your comment, bringing it to us and letting us know what the process will be, and I look forward to getting that correspondence from you, so we can react to it. What do you anticipate, when do you anticipate movement?
Oh, we're a long way from that.
Okay.
The first thing that's going to happen is, within the next 30 days or so, I'll be sending you a letter, giving you what our process is going forward.
Okay.
We're a long way from moving. The postal service has enlisted the aid of a private sector real estate company called CB Richard Ellis on a national contract to deal with disposals. It's, if and when we decide to go forward with, with selling that facility, everyone will know about it, and it'll take some time. It may not sell at all. I've, I've been to communities such as this for years past, and they still haven't sold. It, on the other hand, it might go very quickly. I have no idea what the demand is here in Blue Springs.
Well, certainly, costs will be, be a factor in whether it goes quickly or if it stays there for a long time. But I would imagine you'd probably reach a threshold of where you don't want to just continue to sit on real estate, because the building will deteriorate, and then it's going to cause us some problems downtown, which we would be comedy to you telling you to take care of.
I understand.
Yes.
One other quick question, and you may not have this yet, but is there any sort of timeline as far as what we're looking at if this process moves forward? Nothing yet?
No.
Any other questions? If not, thank you for coming and sharing it with us, and we will try to work through this.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, council.
That brings us to merril announcements. I have a number of them this evening. First and foremost, we want to congratulate the Blue Springs High School Wildcats, 6A state champions in football. You know, one of the things that I'm very proud to say when I'm talking to people in other communities, that the football 6A championship used to go through some other places, of which I will remain nameless, but today, it goes through Blue Springs. And I want to applaud the athletes and, and players, and we brought it home last year with Blue Springs South. So Blue Springs continue to shine athletically, but let's not overlook one of the other ways that they shine with our students, and that's academically. We have a lot of our students that have gone on and done extremely well. I failed to mention a few weeks ago that the person sitting over here to my right, Chris Sandy, has been named Acting Director of the Public Works Department, and we welcome Chris, certainly, to be at our meetings and to bring about that expertise we need when we're discussing those issues as it pertains to the department that you're now in charge of. So, and we welcome Chris. We have a few other things. We have a few other things. The mayor's, at our last Eastern Jackson County Betterment Council, we had a presentation about a Salvation Army, and there was a challenge of the mayor's to see who could get out, and it's going to be next Friday, December 7, from 9:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m., and see who could get out and raise the most donations. Now, certainly, with independents and Lee Summit having a larger population than we have, I said it has to be on a per capita basis to determine the winner, not just based on strictly money raised. So we have a calendar here. We have time slots from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. We have single names in most cases, but other people can participate. You know, you don't have to have just one person there. We can have, we're going to have at least two aprons and bells, right? So we can double up on some of those. But right now, there's a slot from 11:00 to 12:00 on Friday that's open with no one. So we want to feel that, and any other time spans in council and staff and the community, those sitting in the audience and those that might be watching on Cable TV 7, that we would invite you to call Kathy at City Hall, 228-0111, and sign up for this, and let us go out there and show Blue Springs continue to be on top when it comes to doing anything that we set our minds to do. So that being done, now we're going to go to some other announcements. Filing for the April 2, 2013 municipal election starts on Tuesday, December 11, and it closes on January 15 at 5:00 p.m. Packages were available starting today to be picked up for those people that might be interested. We have council districts open for District 1, 2, and 3 for a three-year term. So any questions about that, you might see Kathy, and she can explain it to you and tell you what you need to do if you are interested. Tomorrow night, beginning at 5:30 p.m., is the mayor's Christmas tree lighting ceremony. We want to invite everyone to come out and participate in that. It's very well-received. We have a good turnout every year. We have hot dogs, we have cookies, we have hot chocolate. Our price shopper stores participate in doing that. We have some council members here that are actively involved in doing it as well. So we want you to come out. Since I've been mayor, and this is my fifth Christmas tree lighting ceremony, I think I can actually do it without being really cold, which is a blessing. It has been challenging in years past to go out there and do that, because it's extremely cold. So it'll be a very pleasant evening, and we invite everyone to come out and do that. That brings me to Thoughts to Punda. Tonight comes from W.K. Hope, and I quote, "Self-discipline is when your conscience tells you to do something and you don't talk back." That concludes the Merrill announcements. Next brings us to visitors, and I don't have any visitors' appearance forms to recognize anyone. So we would have a motion to go into executive session. So moved. Is there a second? Second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Byron?
Aye.
Councilman Levy?
Aye.
Chair, you in?
Okay, we're going to take pause for about five minutes to allow our visitors to be excused, and then we will come back and go into executive session.